Good evening. How are you guys?
Good.
And so we have a talk scheduled with the Powerage. Um, we have a meeting right now. I'm just sharing some information about what's going on in South End and our program. We have a program for Sora May. It's a T21 program and will be rebuilding 529 college domestic accounts for our elementary students at South End Middle School. Now, when we open the accounts, we give them $50 and then we match them, dollar to dollar, or two hundred dollars in the first three scenes. Now, I'm going to reiterate to your programs, look if you're current, who won't be up here as a secondary student. A lot of that, we have partnered with Inversent, which is a, um, an organization out of Boston that does workshops. And we've already, ooh. We've already listed two, um, at the South End Middle School. And they're really workshops surrounding the college-going process, how to understand FAFSA's, how to network with your school and understand what's going on with your students going into, from seventh grade on up. And we have two more, one in February and one in April. Again, they're hosted at the South End Middle School. And these are what's open to all Springfield Public students and their families. So we really want to engage them around going to college, thinking about college, the cost of college, and how to get there. Um, I will leave these, I can leave the flyers and all the information with you guys to, if you have any questions. It's really just informative to let you know what's going on and, um, promote this program, the workshops really. We have two more, as I said, they start at 6:00 PM on the February 8th and April 4th. We do a raffle for a hundred dollar gift card, we provide dinner for families that attend, and, um, there's activities for little ones if families have little ones. I said a lot really fast, do you have any questions?
Well, thank you for sharing that valuable information with us. I have to be clear, should you know what your success ratio is, so you can have a very common, you can actually not leave that house.
Well, that's, Inversent is, I'm going to invite my friend Keenan, my supervisor Keenan Grooms, who's also with the office. He's well-versed in Inversent's, um, success. You want to come speak with me?
Good evening, Council. My name is Keenan Grooms and I'm actually the program manager for Sora May. And I'm, to answer your question, Counselor Walsh, uh, the program where you're partnering with Inversent, so they've had a historic success rate of around raising $2 million through matching savings accounts with over 2,000 families. And primarily, they focused on the Latino community in the Boston area. So we're looking at Chelsea, East Boston, Revere, predominantly first-generation or immigrant populations. So, one thing the Treasury really wants us to focus on is creating a college-going culture as well as working with families that typically do not see or realize the college education as well as vocational schools. So we're looking around 10% clip here in, um, at the South End, at South End Middle School, um, with understanding that it's, it's tough to actually raise money and save money as families. So even if it's $50, it's understanding that it's, college is going to be the next step and the most important step to get children and families out of poverty.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. The next speaker on the list is Maggie Witten. Is it Witten?
Witten.
Okay.
Witten.
Thank you.
So, I'm Maggie Witten and this is my colleague Sean Fallon. We're with Mercy Medical Center and we are reading a letter written by Dr. Robert Ruse, who's the Vice President of Behavioral Health for Mercy Medical Center and its affiliates. We're speaking about Tobacco 21. And I just want to clarify before reading the letter, that the policy holds retailers accountable and does not penalize young people for being targeted by tobacco companies. So it does not penalize young people for purchase, use, or possession of tobacco. It just penalizes retailers. So, the letter he wrote, "Dear members of the Springfield Public Health Council, as an addiction specialist and mental and behavioral health professional, I ask you to support increasing the legal age to purchase tobacco products to 21. This policy change would decrease tobacco use and nicotine addiction among youth, which would improve health, save lives, and reduce healthcare costs."
Addiction is a chronic disease of the brain that impacts one's biology, psychology, and social environment. Tobacco is a priority issue for Mercy Behavioral Healthcare because it's a true gateway drug. The majority of patients with chronic mental health and substance use disorders were exposed to tobacco before other drugs, and nicotine is the most common first addiction. The vast majority of our patients first began smoking before the age of 21, when their brains were still developing. While working on the Governor Baker's opioid task force, prevention was a central strategy for combating the opioid crisis. If we want to address substance use in the Commonwealth and make headway in the disease of addiction, protecting our youth from tobacco is a powerful first step.
We must change the culture around experimentation with substances and provide coping mechanisms to deal with stressors, tools to combat peer pressure, and positive activities for our young people. Youth are often first exposed to substances like tobacco from their peers. This policy would reduce youth access through social sources, reducing the risk of addiction, future disease, and early death. Dozens of communities across Massachusetts have adopted these policies and large percentages of our state's population are already covered by them. The smoking rate in Springfield is 35% higher than the state of Massachusetts as a whole. And the death rate from lung cancer is 10% higher in this city than the state overall. It's time for Springfield, and now it has, the largest city in Massachusetts that previously remained on the sidelines, to take a stand, as many others have done, to protect our youth.
Despite recent gains, tobacco use remains the leading cause of preventable illness and premature death in Massachusetts, and the tobacco problem is far from solved. Tobacco use costs Massachusetts and our residents more than $4 billion annually in healthcare costs. 95% of adult smokers began smoking before the age of 21. Nicotine has harmful structural and chemical impacts on the developing brain and may lead to future alcohol and other drug addiction, panic attacks, and depression. The tobacco industry is changing and innovating, introducing new products and marketing strategies that appeal to youth.
Massachusetts has made great progress in reducing rates of youth cigarette smoking, but the wave of new addictive tobacco and nicotine products targeted at youth requires us to respond in new ways to protect our young people. On behalf of Mercy Behavioral Health and our patients, I urge you, your support in raising the age to 21. Sincerely, Dr. Robert Ruse. Thank you, Council members.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sean Fallon. Avani Harris.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Avani Harris and I actually supervise, uh, the youth here with the Mason Square Health Task Force. They are peer health advocates. And, um, we have a few that will actually share, um, their testimony today.
I'm a peer health advocate. My name is Ronaldo. I'm 18. My peers and I have advocated over this policy of Tobacco 21. We support it. We have, we started the, um, postcard campaign. We have almost 200 signed and from those 289 from Springfield who support this policy. We also don't only, um, support this local, but we, um, statewide, we went to the Senate's House, um, to talk about Tobacco 21. My peers as well have something to say.
Good evening. I'm Abigail Martinez. Um, I go to SciTech. I'm also a peer health advocate and I also support this because it means a lot to us. We've worked pretty hard to get this done. And I've seen a lot of people suffer from addiction and it was caused from a young age because being able to access these things. So, I support this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tyler N. Brantley. I'm also a peer health advocate. I attend SciTech as well. I am totally for passing the, the tobacco law to raise the age from 18 to 21. I personally have seen close friends and family members have a very, very negative effect when using tobacco just because there's easy access. There are people my age in my school and in my grade who think that it's cool just because they can go to a store without getting carded and getting things to help them. And this is not good. There's, we, there's 16, 15, 14 in high school and I feel like it's really going to have a negative effect on them. There's people who are bright in honors and AP classes that are going out and taking part in these activities and that's really affecting the work they do in school and the way they carry themselves. Therefore, I am for passing of the law.
Um, good ne, good evening, um, Council members. Um, I'm Maxo Maddix. I go to, um, Renaissance School, 14 years old. And I support this policy because, um, as a former smoker or vape user, um, I know how hard it is to get addicted and then like try hard not to stop. Um, and some of my friends, they still do it. And like things that got caught my eye was that had flavors and it didn't cost a lot of money and it was easy to get. I have, um, 18-year-old friend, now 19, that, um, will buy me these products and give them to me. Um, I did this for eight months and it was hard for me to stop, but I did because I knew how bad it was for my health. Thank you.
Now, we look at you, Council members, who raised the fine associated with this policy. Thank you.
Mr. President, could the other, um, students identify themselves?
Would you like to identify?
Just say your name and what school you're at.
Ayana Cruz, Holly O'Kaien. I'm 14.
My name is, um, Nalaya and I go to Putnam.
My name is Azaya Caesar and I go to SciTech.
My name is Daniel Goodrow. I go to SciTech and I'm 15.
My name is, my name is Fabian Ramsey. I go to SciTech. I'm 16.
My name is Xavier Matos. I go to Commerce and I'm 14.
Thank you very much.
I just want to start off by thanking Helen Colton Harris, as well as, uh, Avani Harris, who organized this effort. Um, and I also want to thank the young people. You know, it's not easy to take a stand on, on, on what some might, might see as a controversial issue. It's not easy to come before, before the council and to give your own personal testimony. Uh, so I just want to give you credit, uh, the schools and the principals and the teachers that are having an impact on your lives. Uh, clearly something is working, uh, parents as well. So, um, to you guys, kudos. Uh, we look forward to hopefully passing this in certainly the coming weeks. So, thank you.
Ken Farbstein is just going to have to, I just, I just want to acknowledge the service of, of Council members. These young people did a tremendous job. Uh, they've been at the State House. I've met with a lot of them at the State House. They've been working on a statewide issue and hopefully, uh, this coming session, the legislature will take this bill up and make it a statewide ban on cigarettes. But I always want to tell them, they were very good, the little youth director there, Helen Colton, want to appreciate what you've done and your staff and, uh, all young people. Good advocacy, very good.
Mr. President and Council members, I'm Ken Farbstein. I'm with the Network for the Improvement of Addiction Treatment Foundation, NIOTX Foundation. Um, could I, could I approach the, you all, I had bought some products at the.
Uh, there's a high school, right across the high school, there's a, um, convenience store. And earlier this evening, I bought one of the products. There's a, this one is a public, um, convenience store, um, here in both schools and now, so I went to, it was two convenience stores, that is the closest there, and bought some of these products. And, uh, you'll see that they're, they're flavored cigars and candy flavors and the e-juice are, the e-juice comes in flavors like pina colada and, uh, strawberry and watermelon, bubble gum. Um, and the cigars come in all sorts of flavors too, um, grape and white peach and mango and all sorts. I actually, and the, uh, in the second store, they, they let me take a photo of their products, or several dozen products. The, I put the photo on, um, two different, I left it, so.
The Department of Public Health of the state has put together a list of more than 1,000 different flavors. And these are, these are designed to appeal to young people. It's, it's so clear. Uh, and recently, the, uh, big tobacco makers were forced to put in, uh, full-page ads in, in more than two dozen city newspapers across the country.
Uh, saying that nicotine is the addictive drug in tobacco. Cigarette companies intentionally design cigarettes with enough nicotine to create and sustain addiction. When you smoke, the nicotine actually changes the brain.
So I think you can tell, thank you, from these flavors, whose brains are they trying to change? So to me, the Tobacco 21 is a very clear issue. Uh, it has a very good broad definition of, of some of these new proliferating tobacco products, which are cheap, very, very cheap and sweet and way too accessible. Um, uh, the, the last point I wanted to make was that, uh, this is, that sometimes, um, in some of the cities and towns, we hear some, uh, pushback from retailers about how the awful consequences of, you know, how, how, how important these are to their business. But I think that's, that's really a non-issue. There was an article that I saw, uh, that I read in Convenience Store News, which is a trade magazine, trade journal, and it quoted, interviewed the head of the, the Executive Director of the National Association of Tobacco Outlets, NATO, which is one of the big trade organizations. And, uh, the Executive Director, um, Thomas Bryant, said, uh, that, um, a minimum age of 21 results in about a 3% decline in tobacco sales for an average store, 3%. So it's, it's not going to cost them their livelihood. I, I think this is an easy one and I hope that you all can, can, uh, adopt the recommendations, the unanimous recommendation of your public health council and, and act on Tobacco 21 tonight. Thanks for your consideration.
Uh, yes, sir. If I could just add, the products that you just passed, I know we're going to talk about this shortly, but the products you just passed around, are they all considered tobacco products? And did T21 ordinance would get rid of all of them, not just cigarettes?
For age 21. For, it would not, yes, yes, that's correct. It would not allow sales to people under age 21.
Of any of those?
People, people, of any of those products. However, um, people over 21 would still be, uh, free to buy them. They, they would be available to them.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
President.
President, Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present, Counselor Rook.
Present.
Present, Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present, Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present, Counselor Marcus Williams. Absent, Counselor Ash. Here, Counselor Twigs. Absent, Counselor Shay.
Present.
Present, Counselor Fenton. Present, Counselor Hurst. Present, Counselor Bud Williams.
Here.
Here, Counselor Ramos.
Present. Everyone please rise and join me for all my side. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, and the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of quick announcements. Uh, we, we're still having a little bit of technical difficulties with our microphones. Uh, I have been informed that the people at home can hear us okay. Uh, it's just the acoustics in the room, we, they're still working on it and so hopefully by the end, by the end of the day, we'll have it, um, all working properly. We're also joined by Counselor-elect Jesse Letterman and Counselor-elect Tim Riley.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I'm going to ask if we could take the item number 11, uh, take it on Tobacco 21, because there's so many students from our Springfield Public Schools and I hope we have to remember, I'll start in the morning, so if we could take that issue up first, that makes a difference.
There's no objection. Item number 11 is the first. Item number 11, the T21 tobacco policy.
Thank you. Helen Colton Harris, Commissioner, Division of Health and Human Services, City of Springfield. Uh, thank you, counselors, for agreeing to listen to our wonderful students and quite frankly, I think they deserve a round of applause. They did an excellent job. The Tobacco 21 initiative came before the Public Health Council in April of 2017. In April of 2017, DJ Wilson, who is here from the Mass Municipal Association, addressed the Public Health Council and at that time, there were 148 cities and towns across the Commonwealth, including Worcester and Boston, that had adopted the T21 regulations. In April, it was 148. Today, it stands at 165. So, uh, we have seen a growth in terms of the cities and towns who are adopting, uh, this regulation. The Public Health Council held a public hearing on October the 18th. There were 13 individuals who spoke in favor of this, uh, regulation. One spoke against, uh, the regulation. That individual was not a business owner, but did speak, um, uh, about the, some concerns that he had. And you've heard the data, you've heard the statistics. I don't have to tell you what tobacco costs in terms of, of economics and in terms of human capital, in terms of the people that we lose from cancer, lung disease, every day. And so, the Public Health Council then, in November, after the public hearing, and I should say, I, we extended the public hearing to November the 5th to get written testimony. We then got written testimony and then on November 18th, the Public Health Council voted unanimously to adopt the regulation to increase the age of access to tobacco products, including those that were passed out to you, uh, to the age of 21. And so, the business community, I have had meetings with, the business community's only request of me because what they have seen is that across the Commonwealth, cities and towns are adopting this. They asked that we impose the regulation, give them a three-to-six month window in terms of implementation, which I and the council agreed to. We are here, the Public Health Council has passed the regulation. It is my understanding that we are legally able to do that based on our Board of Health Authority. However, what we cannot do is impose the fees and fines. The fees and fines are by authority of the City Council based on our charter. I should say to you that the fees and fines are the exact same fees and fines that were previously, um, in the regulation. And so, we did not increase the fees and fines. However, we need to come to you as this body to ask you to reinstitute those fees and fines that were currently agreed to by this body, uh, previously. That is our request, uh, this evening.
I just have a question. Um, will this resolution or your action also impact, as we, we now have coming on the books, uh, the marijuana? So, this is tobacco products and how does the marijuana play into this? Obviously, if it's so detrimental on tobacco with, at that age, does it have any impact on that?
So, uh, this regulation is for tobacco only, but I would say to you, in terms of marijuana, wherever it is illegal to smoke cigarettes, it will be illegal to smoke marijuana publicly as well. So, um, that's a part of the authority, but it will not impact marijuana legislation.
And, and does your, um, authority on tobacco, does that extend to marijuana? Could you also put something in place on that for someone that age?
Currently, the, um, marijuana regulations are held at the statewide level at this point. You know there is a Marijuana Commission that is, uh, going through the process of really thinking through the rules and regulations. But there is no local authority in terms of Boards of Health as far as marijuana legislation is concerned.
And, and do you think maybe the Boards of Health of the state would, um, go before that commission and make a recommendation? Have, have you heard anything of that nature? And if that were the case, would you support something of that nature?
Members of the Marijuana Commission have spoken with me and they are very interested in putting local authority in as far as marijuana legislation is concerned. And of course, I would support that because I believe very strongly that, um, local control is very important when it comes to just assuring, um, that we are, uh, in compliance with the laws.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think many of us here appreciate the work of the, um, that has gone into this and, and the concern and it sounds like many of the, uh, advocates have had family situations and have felt them to support this. But I'm wondering, can you support the concept without reviewing the fees? And are they two different things or is it all the same package?
The, um, fees, so the Board of Health has the authority to promulgate the regulation, which we've done. We have increased the, um, age to 21. However, that regulation would really not have any teeth, in my opinion, unless, um, it has fines and fees attached. There is some authority that allows a Board of Health to go before courts, um, to be able to do citations and those kinds of things. That would be very difficult. And so, while we have had the authority to pass the, um, regulation, we do not have the authority to impose the fines and fees, which in my opinion, are critical to this process.
So, our, our students, have they also discussed the fees as, as part of this and they're supportive of what's?
The students are supportive. We have, um, given the students the regulations. The students have been, um, completely supportive of the Boards of Health action. As a matter of fact, they are our educators and advocates on many levels. They have educated us, uh, to the harmful effects and what they're seeing in their schools and the reason why they feel so strongly about, uh, this legislation or regulation.
I did not ask during the public speak, but do these, do the students who've done such a good job, do they get any extra credit or A's or, or, you know, no homework or, or some, they're just in it for, because they believe in it?
They believe in it. And the, I think most of them will be able to vote in three or four years. Um, some can vote now. And so, what we hope happens is that they get addicted to the legislative process and want to be a part of, of our government and moving us forward, uh, as a city.
Well, I would give them all A's because public speaking is not easy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, what are the, the current fees and fines and are they comparable with the rest of the municipalities throughout the Commonwealth? And does it, and do they go far enough, in your opinion?
The current fees and fines are the same fees, as I suggested, um, that are in the current legislation. And, uh, we made a, a commitment to the business community that we would keep those fees and fines leveled at this point. I certainly think that we could increase fees and fines and, uh, but what we really wanted to do was make sure that we got your support, um, as far as T21 is concerned. And so, if you, um, if an individual goes, so we have individuals who do what's called compliance checks. We send underage participants into stores. If they're able to buy, that store is fined $100. Um, and the individual who sold is fined $100. If they sell again, they're fined $200 and then $300. And then, we have the ability to suspend their permit. So they cannot sell tobacco products without a permit from the Department of Health and Human Services. And should they, um, get suspended, uh, then they would not be able to sell tobacco products. So, in my opinion, at this point, it does go far enough, Counselor.
Then, does the, um, money that's, that's collected, does that go back into the general fund? Does it go back into educational programs? Or does it go back into, um, your department so you can further do compliance? Because I remember we had the tobacco settlement and the state had millions of dollars and they reduced that down to such a low level that people have a hard time enforcing the rules and regulations. So is that money accessible to your department or how does that work?
Well, at this point, as you know, legislatively, all fines and fees go into the general fund of the city. Um, and certainly, at the time that we negotiate our budgets or talk about our budgets, we certainly can talk about the revenue that each, um, department has brought in and make some suggestions around that. But all fines and fees go to the general fund.
TJ just heard you say that, so remember that when you.
He tells me that every budget season. That's why I know it so well.
Helen, also, can, can the council, uh, at this point, raise those fees if they so desired or lower those fees?
the general fund of the city, and certainly, at the time that we negotiate our budgets or talk about our budgets, we certainly can talk about the revenue that each department has brought in and make some suggestions around that, but all fines and fees go to the general fund.
TJ just heard you say that, so remember that when you...
He tells me that every budget season. That's why I know it so well.
Also, can the council, at this point, raise those fees if they so desired, or lower those fees if they so desired?
The council could make its own recommendation around fines and fees. It would be my recommendation, because of our meetings with the business community and what we've said to them and what we've agreed to, that we might consider, at this point, leaving the fines and fees as is, and if there should be an increase or decrease, that that happen at a later time.
And then, you would come in and make that recommendation, or can this body make that recommendation?
Certainly, we can make the recommendation, but it is the city council that has the authority to approve or not approve. So, I could come and make a recommendation, and this body may not agree with my recommendation, but certainly, we can make a recommendation.
So, last question. So, with or without you, this body can make a further recommendation on fines?
With or without, I'm sorry.
Health Department. With or without you, the Health Department, making the recommendation?
Yes. I mean, obviously, the responsibility, the fiscal responsibility and authority of fines and fees and its passage belongs with the city council, so you certainly can do that.
But the only reason why I said that, because we couldn't pass the legislation to create the ordinance to ban smoking at 21. You have to trigger that piece.
That's correct. The council has, the Public Health Council has promulgated the regulation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, what's happened is they passed the first step of what we asked for, and we'll be back in January, I believe, January is that right? We'll be back in January before the second step. So, this is a good thing, so you all need to look happy, you've done very well.
Here in person, Commissioner, Counselor Allen.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met tonight. In attendance was myself and Counselor Walsh, and later, Counselor-elect Ryan. We did not have a quorum in order to pass anything, but we did discuss the following grant, the November Revenue versus Expenditure Report, and the grants for the SSYI, for the library, for multi-city young children's mental health system, and for the emergency management system, and they all seemed fine to me. Counselor Walsh asked a few questions. We also discussed the multi, the agreement we have with UMass, which is number eight, item number eight, and we discussed items number nine and 10, which are the solar projects in Indian Orchard. I believe Mr. Connors and Mr. Allen may be addressing us later on those. But the report is that all these things were discussed. We couldn't vote on it because we didn't have a quorum, but they all seem to be good things that we should consider approving tonight. Thank you.
All in favor of accepting the report, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it? Are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none. Next item, Mr. Perk.
Item number one is the November Revenues versus Expenditures Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have the November Revenue Expenditure Report for the General Fund. This represents the first five months of the fiscal year.
All in favor of accepting the report, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it? Item number two and three.
Items two and three are reports and recommendations from the Board of Public Works regarding petitions from Eversource to install electrical facilities on Cottage Street and Albany Street. The recommendations are to approve both items.
Good evening, Counselors. Excuse me, as the clerk mentioned, two applications by Eversource, one on Cottage Street that will serve the new PVA facility that is going to be constructed on Cottage Street, the second one on Albany Street, which is a new service to an existing building.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. All in favor of the petition, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it?
Item number four is the SSYI Grant Acceptance in the Amount of $1.5 Million.
Good evening, Councilor President. I'm here respectfully, hoping that you guys pass the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative in the amount of $500,000. What this grant does is that it provides young people, 17 to 24, who are very high-risk, who have also had run-ins with the law enforcement officers, with police, and gun-related charges and offenses, as well as high drug and gang involvement. So, what this program does is provide outreach, as well as in-service by ROKA and Hampton County Sheriff's Department and AISS. It also provides support services with clinical support options, for mental health assessments, and it also includes the Regional Employment Board for job readiness and employment training. Any other questions?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, John, thanks for the report. Could you just give us a rough idea of how much money goes where this is? Because we have Shannon as well.
Correct.
This is more...
Separate, right.
Totally separate.
Right.
And this money goes mainly to ROKA, am I right?
Correct, primarily to ROKA. So, the major difference between Shannon and SSYI is that Shannon is more of an after-school community engagement, that type of program, whereas, ROKA is, it goes after, there's more outreach, the street outreach workers, so they're going out to the street, they're getting guys, young men, who don't want to do program, and they're going, they're continuously going and going and going and repeatedly going to their homes, to their jobs that they have one, to their girlfriend's house, and getting them to engage in programming.
And so, this is, how much does ROKA get of this?
So, out of this grant, ROKA will receive about $335,000, $37,000. Hampton County Sheriff's Department gets about 70, 71. Springfield Police Department receives 72. Clinical support, $20,000, as well as the RAB and Bay State Medical Center.
So, is this, I mean, what you just said in terms of the numbers, add up to $400,000. But our agenda says $1.5 Million.
Yeah, $1.5. I think that's the error, so it's $1 Million over two years, so for this fiscal year that we're currently here for now, it's $500,000.
So, the $500,000, the breakdown you just gave us is for one year?
Correct.
Be similar for the second year, but the total is $1 Million that we're receiving?
It's a million, it's an amendment to the previous contract, that was a half a million, so that's why it says $1.5, but it's actually only $1 Million additional funds that we're receiving over the next two years, fiscal years.
So, there needs to be some sort of adjustment to this number, it seems like to me. I don't know what the right number is, but...
Yeah, the right number should be $1 Million.
$1 Million. And it says $1.5.
I defer to the Finance Department. The package submitted says $1.5 Million.
Okay.
Contract.
Need an amendment, Mr. Perk?
All of the financial documents that have been submitted to the council say $1.5 Million, and have a breakdown of that information.
Right. It's a...
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Williams.
First, congratulations on your new position. He's now your Grants Administrator for the city, thank you, for the Police Department.
Yes, sir.
Just what does Bay State do to support in this grant? You said, how much do they get?
Yes, Bay State receives about $28,000, about $19,500. So, they employ clinicians who also work with ROKA, actually, in ROKA. They go two to three times per week, and they do what's called, it's like a focus circle group training with the young men, and in those, they really just work on the other side of life, so the emotions and how they deal with things, and how they communicate those types of issues.
And then, ROKA is just primarily outreach?
Correct, outreach and outreach. As you know, ROKA also has the Hi-Set GED program, they have the job readiness and employment skills training programs, so they also contribute in that fashion as well. And this program is only for individuals living in Springfield.
But these are the same vendors for the last several years?
Correct.
The state hasn't opened this up?
Right, it hasn't been a new application for this program statewide, so that's why it's the same partners essentially, and they're just amending contract after contract.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it?
Thank you.
Item five is acceptance of the FY18 State Aid to Public Libraries in the amount of $286,340.78.
Hi, good evening, Molly Fogarty, Library Director. This is funding from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. It's a grant that we apply for every year, and we're in compliance with all state standards for public libraries, so we've received our grant award. If you have any questions?
Any questions for the council? All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it?
Item number six is an order to accept the Mass Multi-City Young Children's Mental Health Systems Care Grant in the amount of $198,000.
Helen Carlton Harris, Health and Human Services. This is a grant that we have with Worcester, Springfield, and Boston. It is to deal with mental health issues of children under the age of eight years old in the three cities. Our clinical partner in the city of Springfield is Gandara Mental Health Services.
Any questions for the council? All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it?
Item number seven is a grant, is the FY17 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $69,975.
I'm Bob Hassett, I'm the Emergency Management Director for Springfield. This is an emergency management performance grant for $69,000, and what we're doing is we're replacing the immersion suits for the Springfield Fire Department. The current ones they have are at the end of their service life for ice rescue. The next one is to purchase some area ray gas and radiation monitoring devices. The next one is some mobile video screens, so we can use them in the command posts out in the field, and the last things are some transport cases for the monitors and detectors to keep them safe and continue their service life, and also some office supplies for the Emergency Operations Center.
Counselor Williams.
I just want to thank Bob. We very rarely see you down here, but when you come, you always come trying to upgrade your system. I just want to thank you for all that you've done through the emergency situations, through the tornadoes and ice storms and all the stuff we have, because you're actually on the ground, and sometimes I think we forget about you because you do such a great job. But I just want to let you know, we deeply appreciate what you do for our emergency situation in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. It's my honor to do so.
Any other questions for the council? Seeing none. All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it?
Thank you.
Item number eight, it's an order approving an intergovernmental agreement with UMass Medical School for Medicaid claims processing.
Good evening, Mr. President of the council. This request is to approve an agreement with UMass Boston to do our municipal Medicaid billing on behalf of our students in Springfield Public Schools. For the students that are eligible to get Medicaid reimbursements for the services we provide, UMass does the billing for us. We pay about 2.5% on whatever revenue they bring in, so it's a good deal for the city, and we're looking to do one year with two option of one-year renewals.
Any questions for the council? Seeing none. All in favor of suspending of Rule 19, say aye. Opposed, you guys have it?
On approving the order, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams. Absent Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Twigs. Absent Counselor Shea?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Item number nine is an order authorizing the negotiation of a personal property tax agreement with Citizens Pine Vale Solar.
Good evening, Brian Connors from the Economic Development Office. The next two items are in relation to the disposition of a pair of properties in Indian Orchard on Pine Vale Street and on Oak Street. These two properties have been put out to request for proposals a number of times. They're historically related to Chapin Valve and the Crane Companies. They both historically have had landfill uses and, as such, have DEP restrictions with 20-year agreements for ongoing monitoring. We put these out last year to bid for redevelopment, received one bid from Roger Oberge and Mark Murphy, who are with us here today. The bulk of the redevelopment on both properties is for solar. At that point, we recommended the proposal. We haven't brought it here yet because of the complex nature of assessing and taxing solar. We first wanted to make sure that was clear, what the tax agreement would be, what the tax revenues would be for city council, before we brought ahead the transfer of the property. So, what we're doing tonight with these two items are, and Richie Allen is here from assessors, can explain further, the process for getting into an agreement for the taxes, and then we would be back here again on the actual transfer, so you have the full picture of what the agreement is. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Richie Allen. The developers are here, if there are further questions about the project as well.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Yeah, so, electricity generating, energy generating facilities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, when the whole industry was deregulated about 19 years ago, the legislature created a vehicle for negotiating agreements. At that time, there were a lot of very large energy facilities around the Commonwealth, some nuclear facilities, and there were very large taxpayers in those communities, and so, the legislature created this vehicle, if you will, of tax agreements that allowed developers or owners of energy facilities to have the protection, the assurance for a 20, 25-year period of what their tax exposure will be and what expense they should build into their budget for financing and operating purposes. We've had one experience with this in Springfield. About three years ago, we brought before the council a proposal for a solar facility on West Mass land over at the Chickapie Line, and Citizens Energy was a developer there, and the council authorized the Board of Assessors to go forward with the agreement and approve the agreement, and that's worked very well. It's on contaminated land that the West Mass owns over by the Chickapie Line, and we assessed that as real estate as well as personal property. The agreement itself, just full disclosure, the orders before you this evening, nine and 10, it's the same developers, the same energy provider, and really, the same kind of negotiated agreement. What we're asking for this evening, in the first instance, is the authority for the assessors to have negotiated this agreement. And in full disclosure, we've been talking to Citizens Energy for several months, and we have an agreement that we're prepared to put forward this evening, if the council is willing to entertain that, but we've just had great experience with them. They're a very professional operation. They're represented here this evening by Attorney Martin Dunn, but the request this evening is, in the first instance, for authority to have the agreement, and secondarily, if the council's willing, we would present the agreement for your approval this evening. I have to take responsibility for the, kind of the collision, if you will, of the two steps. I was so focused on the certification and preparation for the tax rate process that I neglected to bring forward the authority order, which we could have done months ago, so I'll take responsibility for that, but it's, as I say, the relationship has been very good. When you have contaminated land, really, the highest and best use in the final analysis is to have a solar facility there. These parcels, there's about... These parcels, there's about 38 acres total, they're owned by the city. We're getting zero in tax revenue now. If we're able to go forward with the sale to the developer, we would get real estate tax as well as personal property tax per the agreements that we've discussed with Citizens Energy. So combined, the two agreements would yield about $60,000 a year in personal property taxes alone for the city that we're not seeing now. So happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I can just clarify for the body. What's on your agenda today is an order authorizing the city of Springfield to negotiate with the developers about these tax abatements. What I have on my desk here, which was presented to me by the Assessor's Office, are the completed agreements, and I believe that Assessor Allen has suggested that they may want the council to vote on these contracts, approve the contracts which are not on the agenda, which theoretically the council may be able to do. So if it's the will of the body to discuss and potentially vote on the contract, I will then pass these out at the appropriate time, if that's the will of the body.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we take both items together to approve the contracts. If there's no objection?
Well, just to be clear, you've got two orders, which are the orders to basically begin negotiation, that's the way the orders are framed. You'd need a motion basically to take these contracts under suspension of rules.
I see, there's suspension, okay.
So, I mean, you may do it however you want, but I would assume that you'd want to vote on the orders first?
Correct.
And then you decide whether or not you want to take up the contracts under the suspension of rules, which you could do now or at the end of the meeting, which have their own issues related to that sort of move, okay?
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Allen, is this an illegal subject for the city to do something against?
A tax agreement?
No, the whole solar thing.
No, actually, it's pretty standard. There's been tremendous activity with solar developers around the Commonwealth, and the standard method of dealing with it is to have a tax agreement. And so that's pretty common.
So are we being asked tonight to know what the terms of any of the dollars on side of this, or just the ability for you to negotiate?
What's on the printed agenda this evening is the authority for the assessors to negotiate. We are, so we certainly would welcome approval of that this evening. But beyond that, if the council is so willing under suspension of the rules, as the clerk indicates, we do have an agreement, which has been discussed at length with the Citizens Energy personnel, and we, you know, I can represent to you that we've reached final agreement on that, so.
Well, I think there were a couple things that I wanted to ask you about this. One is that property returns to the tax rules, which we hold that it is entirely, and the developers are not eligible. And they have done very good work with the fire issues. So when they first came before us, we didn't know that much about them, but we took a chance on them, and the reputations they had and the names they had, they were very successful. So I think it'd be a good thing to pass this tonight and support this initiative.
Can anyone confirm whether or not these petitioner has recently met with the Inter Citizens Council?
Roger Oberge, Seven Longview Drive, Wilberham. One of the developers here with Mark Murphy as well. President Ramos, to answer your question, the last time we met with the Citizens Council, you were president for that meeting, and I don't remember the date offhand, but it was during the bidding process, if I remember correctly, so I would approximate a year ago or so. Correct, yeah, there's a letter of support as well from the Citizens Council for the development of both parcels.
Any other questions or comments for the council?
Just a comment. I mean, I want to commend Richie Allen and the administration for taking, and Brian Connors, for taking this property that has Brownsville issues, 21E issues, and finding a use for it. And the organization that's doing it is connected to Joe Kennedy, who does a great job with getting fuel through a lot of our poor citizens in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And they're always looking for creative ways to try to be good citizens, and I plan to support this tonight.
I plan to support this as well, and as Counselor Williams alluded to, over the last three years, we've had great success with this program at West Mass. And I also think the involvement of Marty Dunn, former mayor and senator from Hoyoke, and his involvement with the Kennedy family over the years gives me some confidence in this project, and the fact that Richie Allen and Brian are certainly comfortable with it as well, I think lends a lot of credence to this project, and I hope that it would be unanimous.
Any other questions or comments for the council? So what is on the agenda tonight is the authorization for the negotiation. And so, Mr. Burke, if we are to entertain that motion, would that be at the end of the meeting?
You can entertain the motion. So right now, so the motion would be to discuss and potentially vote on an additional item. So you can entertain the motion at any time after you've completed the item that's before you, which is the authorization.
And it would be under suspension of rules of meaning?
It would be a motion to discuss and potentially approve the contract, the tax agreement, which is not currently on the agenda. I'm sorry, under suspension of rules.
Under suspension of rules, which means it would have to be unanimous.
That is correct, that is correct.
You're being dedicated to the issue?
The motion, if a motion is to be made, the motion would be to discuss or to take up the tax agreement, which is not currently on the agenda, under suspension of rules.
Okay.
After your agenda is passed?
Correct, or after we've moved out of this agenda item. It's not a motion to change the current agenda item, so you'd have to finish your vote on the item that's currently before the body, and then someone will make a motion at that time to say, I would like to take up the discussion of this contract under suspension of rules.
Is everyone clear on that?
Yes.
I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to say that I advise that the discussion and vote on the agreement come at a later date, only to be safe under our open meeting laws. So what's on the agenda for tonight is an authorization to negotiate, but that, the part about discussion and possible vote on the actual agreement has not been placed on the agenda. While you can suspend the rules, it's not a suspension of state law, and state law is open meeting law. It's just my advice.
Counselor Oberge.
So after we take the vote on whatever's on the agenda, if we were to take this out on the suspension rules, is there a certain majority that this has to pass by? Because I know to take it out, the suspension has to be unanimous, but then the next vote to accept it, is it still, is it a nine, like majority?
Let me double check, just double check.
No problem.
As a financial order, it will require, I believe it's nine votes, two-thirds.
Mr. President, I'm a little confused. Why the urgency? I understand the authorization that allows Richie to do what he needs to do in terms of negotiations, but why do we need to pass the contract that nobody's seen yet, at least I haven't had a chance to see it? It's not on the agenda, so it hasn't been publicized, so that means most people at home don't know what's in it. So my recommendation of thought would be that we would pass, the authorization allows him to negotiate, put it on the agenda for the next meeting. That way it gets publicized in the news, everybody knows what's going on, and it's not a surprise to anybody what the terms are. Unless somebody would like to tell me why we are rushing this through? Not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying, does anybody else outside of us right now know what this is and what, obviously, that hasn't been circulated, so do any of you know what's in it? Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the council? We will be voting on authorization of negotiation of property, we will not be voting in this final vote, we will not be voting on the contract. This is solely on item number nine, authorization of the negotiation. Counselor Oberge.
So we have two votes in the air. Could I call our assessor back to the podium, please? Can I call the assessor back to the podium, please? And, I mean, I haven't seen the contract, but based upon your expertise and your testimony, I'm prepared to go forward. I believe, I trust in the administration that much. Is there a sense of urgency here? Are we under a time restriction or?
Understand, Counselor, that the land transfer, the city owns the land in both instances here. And I think, and I haven't spoken to the prospective new owners of the land, but I think that the parties on the land ownership and Citizens Energy as the occupant of the land, if you will, I think they want to have the comfort of knowing that the tax expense is something that's manageable before they go much further into their development process. And I don't know if they're seeking financing or, you know, any of that, I couldn't speak to that. But I think that there's a real value to knowing the expense, the operating expense of taxes before they go forward.
How long has this property been vacant? How many years, Brian?
Long time.
How many, what's a long time?
Well, over 10.
Well over 10 years it's been.
One hundred and fifty-five years I settled, the other one's been longer.
Yeah, it's been sitting a long, long time. I think it's time, we got a situation, I don't want to lose a deal, that someone's going to go and clean that property, make good use out of it, put it back on the tax rules, so we can move forward, so I'm prepared to support it tonight. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Oberge. I'm not saying I'm against this, in fact, I'm confident in the circumstances. Conditions are fine, I trust Richie's thing, but did I misinterpret what we were advised by the attorney, that this is a violation of the open meeting laws, that we are bringing up an item, agenda item, that was not properly advertised? So if I'm not mistaken, I believe Attorney Davis just stated that we can't really legally do this by state law. We can pass, authorize him to do the negotiations, or we can pass what was on the agenda, but we can't pass something that wasn't advertised. Did I miss, maybe I didn't understand it correctly. We've got several attorneys in the room, am I rough-faced with that, gentlemen?
I did not understand that.
That was the petition that I understood as well. Oh, well, Attorney Davis, please, could you clarify for me?
Yes, so what I advised previously was that while the council can't suspend the rules to hear about the agreement and possibly vote on the agreement this evening, it would only be a suspension of the city council's rules. It wouldn't be a suspension of the state law, and the provision of state law that applies here is the open meeting law. And while we are, the body is allowed to hear things that are reasonably related, I don't know that that's a connection that can be made, that you are authorizing someone to negotiate, but then you have the agreement. I would think it would take time to have the agreement, relooking at the agenda as a later present, so that's my advice.
Is we're violating state law?
I can answer that. A late filed order would be an order, we've never taken an order that was filed within 48 hours of a meeting. The only orders, our deadline to publish the city council agenda is Wednesdays at noon, or Wednesdays, and we have received all the documents by noon from every city department. So Wednesday is the deadline for the publication of the agenda and for all the documents that have been submitted to the clerk's office. A late filed order in the sense of the city council rule is an order that we've received after Wednesday. If that makes sense?
But before?
But before the 48-hour deadline, correct.
Mr. President, thank you. Almost Christmas, we're all in the spirit, but.
We can't give that which we don't have the authority to do. So I think everybody should support this project. I know they've got a lot of credibility with Attorney Dunn and others, and I have familiarity with these developers and private business matters, and I have every reason to believe that we will approve this, but we're getting counsel that we can't. So let's authorize the chairman of the Board of Assessors to go and negotiate and finish up the deal, and then in January we can approve it. And while we're at it, I'd like to point out that I'm really happy to see that we're in here talking about granting authority to the administration to negotiate TIPS, because historically in this body, the administration sort of scurries, negotiates, and then tells us if we don't approve it right away, we're going to have serious problems the next morning. So I think I'd like to recommend, when we get to item 13, that Counselor Allen consider inserting in his proposal for tax incremental financing notifications that we also get authorization, that the administration get authorization to negotiate those deals. I think that this is a really nice precedent we're setting here tonight.
I believe the late filed orders, and I could be wrong, may have been a ministerial error on the city's part, not on the developer. And I don't know if we could check the date on the contract, when that was completed. If it was completed well in advance of the city council agenda deadline, the error doesn't lie with the developer, it's just a ministerial error on behalf of the city. And I think that would be a reasonable accommodation to make to a developer.
So on the contract, the contract that I was presented with does not have a date, I wasn't a part of the negotiations, and this agreement doesn't have a date listed on it, so I don't know when the agreement was created.
So as a point of information, could I ask the developer or the assessor or community development what the date?
Is the answer when the date of the negotiation?
Why was, I guess the question is, why wasn't it filed before the deadline of Wednesday of last week? Is that on behalf, was that an error on our part, or is that an error on the developer's part?
Really, on our side?
There's your answer. There's the answer. So it's nothing the developer did, so we shouldn't penalize the developer because we didn't, I mean, you had the tax rate going, you had the business classification, everything else going on, and by some oversight, this wasn't on here. Had it been on the agenda, we would have voted on it and approved it, and it's already been negotiated by three very capable individuals on the city's behalf and a developer. So my recommendation would be that we take that into consideration and apply a degree of common sense to government, which I think is something that is often overlooked. So I would be willing to support the first item, which would approve the city, approve the city to negotiate, and ironically, we've already negotiated the document, and it's already approved. So it's really, comes down to having the confidence in the three individuals that negotiated the contract and making an accommodation to a developer who we've already done business with in the past and has produced a document. That's my swan song.
Any questions? Motion, any questions? Second, the question from Counselor Burke, Counselor Oberge, Counselor Allen, on the motion.
I just wondered if you could... I just wondered if we could get Attorney Davis to give an opinion based on what we just heard?
I think we've already made the motion, so I don't think we can accept it.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor? Let's move to Attorney Davis.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get a notice. The fact does mean that it wasn't posted. It wasn't, it wasn't, the order didn't miss the deadline. We don't have the order. We were just handed the agreement right now. So it hasn't been posted, so open meeting law is still the same, and there's been no notice given. Because it wasn't technically a ministerial error, it wasn't submitted for the agenda.
Some matter what the reason was, whether it was on the developer or on the city for a reason of the delay, it doesn't matter in terms of what you're referring to.
As far as 48 hours before the agenda is posted, it has to have, given notice, and there was no notice given. My opinion here is.
And could I ask, what would the penalty be if we approved a contract that's already been negotiated that wasn't posted?
I'm not certain what the penalty would be, but I know it would be a violation of the open meeting law. I could look into what the violation would be, but I don't have the top of my head.
I think, maybe $100?
Maybe.
Just for clarification, that they could, the secretary of state, or I can remember the secretary of state, the attorney general could.
It's the suggestion that, the debate that we're having in the chamber suggests that these gentlemen, we're not questioning the quality of their work, their history or their reputation or anything. All we're saying is, is the paperwork never got there. It wasn't publicized, and this is a violation of open meetings laws. And I still haven't heard anybody tell me why it has to be passed tonight as opposed to the first week in January, or the first meeting in January. The assurances that they, this project's going to go forward is evident that you've got enough votes in the chamber for this to pass. I'm going to vote for it in January when it's legal, and I even would vote for it here. I just don't want to contribute to the $300 fine or have the contract de- invalidated because we didn't follow open meeting laws. But his, still haven't heard anybody say it has to be passed right now because anything concrete.
Mr. President? Can I? Yeah. Mr. President, Attorney Martin Dunn, I represent Citizens Energy. I appreciate the efforts here tonight. You know, the reason being that I think both the developer, the landowner would like to see this done as expeditiously as possible. The quicker it happens, the quicker the financing can be attained and the quicker the project can go forward. It's landfill, it's landfill property, and it gets back on the city tax rolls. We're talking about personal property as well, not the real estate, but personal property which has been negotiated. I do see the logic in, if you're authorizing someone to negotiate, then you're authorizing them to negotiate, and if they've already done the negotiation, then it would seem logical that that negotiation, since you've given them the authority to do so, would be accepted as to what they've come forward and negotiated. With all that said, I appreciate the support here tonight and everyone here who is willing to do it expeditiously and get it done. But I've just spoken to the landowner, and the last thing we want to see is anybody get in trouble here. And I think we've heard enough from the various counselors who have expressed the support of the project that they have some concerns. This project has been done above board. It follows the boilerplate language of the previous project that's been done. It's been great benefit to the city. It brings upon clean energy to the community. It funnels money back into Citizens Energy Corporation, which uses their resources to help low income people. This is, this is all good. It's good for the developer. It's good for the city. It's good for poor people. So it's all good. The last thing in the world we want is this thing looked upon or tainted in any way that it's not in violation of an open meeting law for the sake of several weeks. So with all that said, I want to just, I admire Richie Allen so much for getting up here and stating that it was the city's fault, but he has been very, very helpful in negotiating this. It's complicated. Him and his staff, Patrick, did a wonderful job negotiating this in the midst of the busy, busy time they had. So we have no complaints with the treatment of the city whatsoever. We've been treated fairly. It's been, it's been a project that has received the attention that I think it deserved. Richie did a great job. There's no reason for him to take one for the team here tonight and stating that it was his fault. If it didn't get on the agenda, it didn't get on the agenda. People get busy, things happen, and that's just the way it is. So with all that, if we could just respectfully request that he be given the authorization as is on the agenda tonight, and then we come back in two weeks in January with what we think is a really, really good, solid project. And in anticipation of that meeting, ask for your support tonight and ask that you, you know, that you, that you read over the documents. I think you'll see it develop, it delivers, I think, over 25 years on each parcel, some $700,000, couple of megawatts of clean energy, a clean energy footprint. We think it's good for everybody if we could have the first authorization tonight, and we'll be back asking for your consideration in January. I think that'd work better for everybody. We don't want to put people in a position where there's a, you know, there's a question of an open meeting law and that this good thing gets tainted in any way. So with that, I would just ask that you proceed upon that path and want to thank you for your consideration and for your kind words tonight. Thank you.
On approving the authorization, Counselor Edwards. Yes, Counselor Allen. Yes, Counselor Rook. Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh. Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams, absent. Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs, absent. Counselor Shay. Yes, Counselor Fenton. Yes, Counselor Hurst. Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, one is sufficient, order is approved. Mr. Frank, you'd like to ask for a suspension of Rule 19. Does Rule 19 apply to this item?
Yes, it does.
All in favor of suspension of Rule 19? Say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 10 is an order authorizing negotiation of personal property tax agreement with Citizens Oak Street Solar.
Any discussion?
You may want to suspend the rule.
Special Rule 19, all in favor? Say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
On approving the order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh. Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams, absent. Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs, absent. Counselor Shay. Yes, Counselor Fenton. Yes, Counselor Hurst. Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, one is sufficient, order is approved.
The next item on tonight's agenda is an order amending Chapter 385, the parking ban violation. This is on for second and third step.
Excuse me. Good evening, councilors. As you're aware of, at the last meeting, we voted first step for a modification of the parking ban rules and regulations. We are, just to refresh your memory, we are not modifying the fines. We are modifying the language. And essentially what we're doing is making the language clearer for the police and for the DPW. It was passed the first step at the last meeting, and really the language clarification that we're looking for is the $50 fine is whether a vehicle is towed or untowed.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly would support this tonight, but as I discussed earlier, when you see on the city website that there are parking bans and effects and everything else, there is no mention of fine or for monetary amount of fines. And I think it would be very helpful for people to, I think you do it for people to be aware of that, that there is a fine that is $50. And I'm hoping when the information goes out to citizens that somehow this is printed so they can be aware of it.
Absolutely. One of the things that we put together last week, we actually have a press release, assuming that this is passed tonight, we're going to have a press release. And I've already had conversations with a couple publications, so that in the next week or so, we'll have some publicity behind it, and it will also be going out with our notification when we do a regular parking ban.
Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, thank you for all of your hard work, but I did get the chance to review your press release. The one thing that I would request is that hopefully you will ask the mayor to give you some of the revenues or additional revenues that will come as a result from the additional fines, and then maybe you could put that towards an advertising budget so that we could do more than just a quick press release that is going to be a one-time hit, and the likelihood is high that a good majority of the people who are impacted by this will still not be made aware of it. And so I thought the funds were going directly to your office, and I would have made that recommendation to you via email, but now I'm asking you to make that recommendation, if you would, to the mayor so that you can in turn have an advertising budget so that you can repeatedly make people aware of this particular fine.
Right. No, thank you. And our goal with the press release is not necessary for the press relief in itself to be the information. It's really the follow-up from the publications that we've already spoken to that will do the bigger story of not just for what we're attempting to accomplish with this, but the bigger picture of whether we're talking about snow removal, or we're talking about paving, or we're talking about whatever with that. And as I said, I've already had a conversation with Peter Goonin, so hopefully later this week, there will be, you'll start to see that, those publications.
I heard you, I heard you say that you're looking for an amendment from, from the $15 fine going to the 50, but you said something about towing or not towing if they get the $50 fine.
Correct.
Can you clarify that? Because I know we didn't talk about that last night.
The way that the ordinance is written right now, the fine is $50. However, the way that the ordinance is written, it talks about the vehicle being towed, but it discusses hindering snow plowing and snow removal operations. So really what we're adding in there is sometimes police were a little reluctant to issue a $50 fine if the vehicle wasn't towed. So they did issue a $15 ticket for a general parking violation. So what this regulation will do, and what that was causing is you could have people on one side of the street getting a $50 ticket, somebody on the other side of the street getting a 15. So Counselor Rook, I knew it would be Counselor Rook. Yes, it was. Yes, it was. Yes, it was. So really what we are doing is just modifying the language to be able to make the, make the ticket, make a clarification for the ticket issuing. Towed or untowed, the ticket is $50.
Regardless.
Correct.
Towed or untowed, the ticket will be $50.
Correct.
But it doesn't stop you from getting towed or untowed?
No, it does not. No, it does not. Thank you. Thank you. Some more music from Counselor Rook?
This is on for a second and third step this evening, which requires two votes. All in favor of the vote in 422C in order to take the matter up in one vote? Say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
On ordaining the amendment, Counselor Edwards. Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh. Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams, absent. Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Twigs, absent. Counselor Shay. Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
No, one is sufficient?
Thank you, councilors.
Item number 13 is an order, is an amendment to the city ordinances entitled TIF notification.
Thanks, Mr. President. Let me give you a little background on this. This is an ordinance with the intention of notifying us when a TIF is going on. You may have remembered, some of us have been here when Falvey-Linden TIF came up, when the CRRC TIF came up, and we often don't know ahead of time that a TIF is being discussed. The sole purpose of this ordinance is to notify us at the time that a TIF is certainly going to go forward to the state so that we get notified about it. My recommendation tonight for a couple reasons is to lay this on the table tonight for fuller discussion in January, and that's for two reasons. One is, we have two councilors-elect who are sitting over here who we could, while it's legal to vote step one with some councilors and vote steps two and three with others, while that's legal, it seems more logical and more sensible to do it with councillor-elect Ryan and Letterman to be there. Also, there is a little, the language in this, I talked to City Solicitor Pacula today about it, and he objected a little bit to some of the language. So he, it looks like the intention is to get us involved in the negotiation, and the details, that is not the intention. The intention is simply notification. So he said to me today that he and Brian Connors, I've met with Brian a couple times on this, that he and Brian Connors would work on better language for the ordinance here. So the simple, as I said, the simple objective is to notify us so we know a TIF is in the pipeline, but not to get us involved in the detail of what the economic development team needs to do in negotiating with a potential receiver of a TIF. So Counselor Fenton, you mentioned before there was something else we could add to this, and I didn't quite get that. So if, if you could, you know, up to Mr. President, Counselor Fenton did mention something he'd like to add to this, I think it's worth, I didn't quite get that when he mentioned it.
Sure. First, I want to thank Counselor Allen for his leadership on this issue. Several years ago, he and I introduced an ordinance to this body that requires the Economic Development Office to report on a semi-annual basis the results of TIFs. Basically, as a mechanism to check on the actual job creation that results. So this is another good step in the direction towards transparency and accountability with these agreements, and I'm happy for it. But to the counselor's question, my point was just simply that if the council wished, we could consider inserting another provision into this ordinance, which would require that before negotiation begins by the administration, that it require authorization from us so that we're not put in a position where we're notified of an application for an agreement, but not necessarily whether or not the administration's interested in negotiating one with that applicant. I assume that there are plenty of applications that are submitted to the city for TIF relief that are never actually negotiated because the mayor or city leadership don't think that it's a worthy project. And so an additional step that we could consider taking in the new year is amending this to say that not only will we get noticed once the application is filed, but that negotiation won't start by the ECO Dev Office and the mayor until and unless the city council authorizes that negotiation.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thanks, Counselor Fenton. So at this point, I'm not sure there's any action to take on this tonight. We would consider the revised language from City Solicitor Pacula and Economic Development Director Connors. We would consider Counselor Fenton's suggestion. And my recommendation tonight is we would lay it on the table tonight, consider those things, and bring it back in January when we have Counselor Ryan and Counselor Letterman here, and we can have a full discussion of it at that point. So that's my request. Thank you. So I move that we lay this on the table tonight and pick it up again in January when the language has been enhanced to be exactly right.
Most voted by Counselor Allen, second voted by Counselor Edwards. Anyone have a motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
The next item is a resolution supporting a four-year term for city councilors. This resolution is sponsored by Counselor Henry Twigs.
Motion to take one made by Counselor Fenton, seconded by Counselor Hurst. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hoes? The ayes have it.
The last item on the official agenda is a motion to refer all unfinished business to the new legislative year.
Motion made by Counselor Shea, seconded by Counselor Edwards. Voice vote?
Voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hoes? The ayes have it.
That is the end of the formal agenda. The last informal item is a caucus regarding the election of next year's president and vice president.
All right. So before we get to that, tonight, we are saying goodbye, and see you later to two of our official meeting. Okay. So we will close the official meeting, then we will take up the informal caucus, and, all right. All right, so we will officially close the meeting, and as I was saying, tonight, we're going to be saying goodbye to two of our longest-serving members of our council, our Counselor Rook and Counselor Williams. And so, I'll begin with Counselor Rook. And just want to say that it's been a pleasure serving with you. I appreciate all of your advice. I learned a lot sitting next to you my first year here on the council, and you've served this body honorably. And so I just want to thank you for your service, and I have a plaque here to present to you, but before I do that, I want to open it up for comments from our other colleagues. Counselor, we'll go from right to left. Counselor Edwards.
Well, I'd like to first say how much I appreciate serving with you, Counselor Rook. I will miss you. I've said it before, that this council would not be well-served, that there was 13 Melvins on this council. And quite often, we might look at things from different lenses, but I've appreciated your opinion, and there's a biblical term of something about iron sharpening iron. I believe that I'm a better councillor because of some of the things that you forced me to think about, and I really will miss those engagements. I look forward to reaching out to you privately for advice, and I wish nothing but God's be.
Counselor, motion.
I don't want to say anything against a sound like a wake. But I do think with Counselor Rook, and also with Counselor Williams, they have viewpoints that are definitely going to be missed on the council law. For, I think we're going to miss all the surprises that come for some of the initiatives that you take, but your support of businesses, and that part of you, I think will definitely be missed, and I think you really have served the city well. I'm sorry to say you've got.
I feel the same about Counselor Williams, who has a street sense that is so apparent in everything that he does on this board, that he obviously takes it possible. But their points of view, which I don't know if they'll be replicated by Counselor Ryan or Letterman.
Can we assure you they won't?
This is truly an end of the year for both Counselor Rook and Counselor Williams. Beyond the fact that their colleagues have been so for a long time, they're friends, they're great friends. I've known Timmy probably 45 years since I was a kid at a Lady Hope School, and Tim was a couple years ahead, and just family, and Timmy's family and mine have been such great friends for so long. The one thing I will say about Buddy and Tim is, throughout their career, we can go on and on about what they've accomplished and so on, but I always remember as a young candidate, that they went out of their way, both of them, to take you around, and show you around, and introduce you to people, and show you how to do things the right way. And I'll never forget that, and I hope that a little of that has worn off on somebody like me and others, but they'll be missed. There's a lot of institutional knowledge and brain power and know-how going out the door with these two guys, and we're good replacements, but Timmy and Buddy will be missed, there's no question. And I know they're not going far, so anybody's still in the game, and Timmy's busy, going to be busy, I'm sure, with a lot of things that we'll cross paths, but they'll be missed in this chambers without a doubt.
Counselor Shea.
Tough night when you're going to lose two of your great colleagues, they're going to leave you, there's sort of like a feeling of you're a parent, your child leaving home and going off to college, and you don't see them again. But they each bring different strengths to the council. Timmy, I think, is extremely practical, has a great history of the law and how government works, and you saw tonight, he was willing to step up and pay, by the way, the $1,000 fine if we did violate the open meeting law. I think if it had been 50 bucks, he would have coughed it up, but, and Buddy, Buddy brings a different perspective. Buddy's perspective has always been irrespective of the issues, irrespective of how they come along, he's always had that touch for the common man, for the little guy, for the family, for the underdog, to make sure that their voice is heard, and that he has something to say, which, as we all know, having worked with him, it's on just about every agenda item. But they both have great skills, great personalities, and one of the nicest things about them, and I think everybody on this council is, that, you know, we sit in here and we disagree on things, there's no question. We shouldn't always agree on everything, all of us, but the thing about them, and I think everyone here, is that when we walk out that door at the end of the night, we're all still good friends. And we talk, and we get along, and we come in here and we do our job of representing the citizens of the city, which these two have done remarkably well. And I would only hope that I could emulate the skills that both of them have, and try to take what I've learned from them and carry that forward. We're going to miss you. Thank you very much for the job that you've done. We'd like you to stay, but you got to go.
Counselor.
I too rise to acknowledge my colleagues and the great years of service that they contributed. Learned a lot of things from them over the years. I'm going to be brief because one of those things was, it's always nice to get out of the meeting at a reasonable hour. But, you know, Counselor Rook and the history of his family and friends in Hungry Hill, and what Counselor Ash said, really sort of hit home to me, particularly the part about nurturing young people in politics, and showing people the way, and accommodating folks that are trying to enter that venue. Counselor Rook was one of the first people to call me and congratulate me eight years ago when I won my city council race. And I remember running into him at events, and he would always be warm and welcoming, introducing me to people. Counselor Williams, very similar. He was at my first fundraiser I ever had at the JBO, and had some wonderful history and words to share, some funny stories about my uncle, and some really touching stories about my grandfather, and the history that they had together in politics in Hungry Hill. So we're going to miss them and their perspectives tonight. They're not leaving. The city in spirit or in heart, and so I look forward to many more years of this body being active, and hopefully, from time to time, being able to rely on them for advice, just maybe a little bit more from afar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start with Counselor Rook. Some of the statements that the other councillors have said, learned a lot. Grounded, different perspective, sound, always very substantive, and you could always tell that you really, really thought it through before you spoke. And oftentimes politicians tend to overlook that aspect of governance. So I appreciate it. The last two things I'll say is that best argument I've heard against residency was this.
I don't talk.
And I'm sure other people will definitely. And then finally, Baxter and O'Brien probably lose the most by your retirement, and I'd imagine that they'll have to find another mole. And Buddy, you know, what can you say? Somebody who has always stood in the trenches, never afraid for a good old-fashioned fight, and is never going to turn its back on you unless it's turned its back to fight the opponent. We've had some very difficult issues, and one thing that I can tell you is that Buddy has always been steadfast in aligning with my perspective. I just hope he knew it was the right perspective before he aligned. But, you know, it's hard to, not too many people will stand in the trenches with Papa Hearst and then survive to stand in the trenches with Little Hearst. So Buddy, you know, I appreciate everything that you've done, and thank you so much.
Counselor Edwards.
Counselor Rook, as an outgoing freshman councillor, I just want to say honestly, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
You're welcome. Thank you.
To sit here is the greatest honor a man can ever have, and for you gentlemen to be able to do it for 20 years, and longer, and to stay in the game, it really shows me how doing the right thing for the constituents of Springfield, and a place that you love, is probably the most greatest honor you can ever have. I know it's well-wishes. I didn't spend a lot of time, but I did spend a lot of time watching the vote, because a young man, grown up, and, you know, and regardless of your two different point of views, for some kind of reason, I felt like I related with you guys the most, because I feel like we came up kind of a certain kind of way, like, you guys aren't afraid to, and I have an odd way of saying this, but, you know, having to swim through the fences, you know, and not worrying about, you know, what inevitably is going to happen tomorrow. You just know that you came out for your constituency, you came out for your family, and, you know, every time I asked you a question, you gave me an honest answer, but then you gave me two sides to the coin, and made me decide, and it helped me this last year to be able to sit next to you.
Thank you.
Specifically, you know, over some of these things that I still don't understand. And I know that whoever I'm going to sit next to, I'm going to bother you a lot too. But the only thing I do ask is anything that's close toward one, we have those big signs, if you could put in a good word.
The four-by-eight bombs.
I just want to say thank you so much. And honestly, without you even having to realize, and it's with all of our colleagues, whenever the governor's here, or somebody of importance, that you feel that they should know who we are, you shout across the room to make sure we're right there with you.
Yeah.
And that just...
I only had to do that once with you. You learned it pretty quick.
You learned it pretty quick. You know, I just want to say thank you for letting me watch exactly, watch your career unfold.
Thank you very much.
To really be here when you leave is another honor, because I can, when the years to come, if they elect me longer, I can really talk about your career, and talk about you as a councillor.
Thank you.
And you're representing the city of Springfield.
Thank you very much.
Buddy is like Finn, you know, this is going to be the first time, and, well, out of three of us that came from a certain neighborhood, you know, that came along the way through the trenches, growing up with your son, you know, you going back and forth, you know, like he said, with the little guy, and I feel like those are the shoes that I get to feel. I get to feel those shoes that you're going to leave behind. And I think a lot of us, you know, still always agree, and, you know, and 90% of the time, because that's what Counselor Fenton said, we agree 90% of the time. But, you know, with you, I've always appreciated where your perspective is, and that's taken care of home, and taken care of your own. And that's, you know, never forget where you came from, and that's the North End. And I appreciate you regardless, you know, always swooping in, you know, taking the shine. You know, I'm from the North End too. You're never going to forget that. And honestly, I'm very humbled to be able to serve with the both of you in this capacity, because never in a million years, like I've always said, I would ever think I would sit here. And you guys absolutely gave me that right. Don't ever change who you are. Just continue, continue trucking, and just make sure that you're representing your people to the best of your ability. So thank you, both of you, for showing me that, and it was an honor to serve with you both.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Mr. President. First, I liked my vote, rule 20.
And object.
Object. So that was my, that was my...
You're taking seven.
There were a lot of us who were rookies that year, and were like trying to figure it out, and then this seasoned veteran goes, "I invoke rule 20," and everything stops. And I realized then that there was more to it than just showing up here, and so I appreciate you being the strategist on the rules and teaching us.
You're losing the debate.
But, Timmy, I've always appreciated your concern about the business, as Caterie said earlier, business people, the financial side of it, but also you have this way of like boiling things down, to make them just, they become like almost not governmental, but just human beings dealing with human beings kind of thing. And you did it tonight. You did it tonight. It didn't get us all the way there, but you were trying, you were trying, and that, I believe that's a big part of you. You also brought to this council, you know, the humor, and the humor is just, I mean, maybe some of us will crack an occasional joke, but you brought more humor, I think, than anybody else. And, you know, with you and with Bud, Bud, I'll just say a couple things about you, the fighting for everybody, and fighting for, making sure the playing field is level, and when it's starting to tilt a little bit, and you just say, "Let's tilt it back," and make sure we're not favoring one group of people, or one area of the city, or one park, or whatever, over other parks. And I think that's a really big part of what you believe in, and your value system. I learned a lot from that. You always made sense with what you said. You say a lot, you know, and there's some real pearls in there. And I really love how you fought for the regular people. And, you know, it is, it's a big deal here. Not a lot of people get to do this, and you guys haven't done it for 20 years plus. It's just awesome. But what I learned from you here pales a little bit by, or it certainly goes with what I've learned from you on the outside. And that is, with Timmy, when we were fighting with tooth and nail to save Cathedral High School, he was one of, Mike, and Timmy, and me, and two or three other people, Al Delasha, Daryl DeVillier, and that was it, five of us about. And he was in there tooth and nail fighting everything. He hosted the meetings at AXIA Insurance Group, the eight o'clock meetings, of which there were numerous, 50, there must have been 50 meetings. We fought so hard for that thing. And I saw then what it was like to have him as a teammate, not just as a councillor here, but as a teammate. And likewise, on the teammate side, Bud, I spent Saturday watching my grand, two of my grandchildren, a boy and girl, she's the only girl on the team, my son is the coach, playing with Bud's grandson. And they've been playing for a couple of years, and so my, two of my grandkids and his grandson, all play on the same team. And I've seen Bud be at the games, and how he always cares about people who coach and give back, and do things for our kids. And I think, Bud, that's a legacy of what I got from you. And so, as much as I learned from you here, I learned the type of people you are in those two settings. And I just want to thank you for the whole thing, because it takes some courage here. The things we do, you know, maybe you go through some nights where you don't have a lot to contribute to the meeting, or it's not the kind of meeting that has an issue that you're big on, but everybody in here has to have courage at some point. And you showed me how to have courage, and Bud, you have too. And I appreciate that, because it's not always easy to fight for what you think is right, and fight, and stand up, and be counted. So thank you for what we learned from you. Thank you for your efforts for the city. And I know deep down, you guys love this city, and will always do that. So thank you.
Thanks. Good job.
First year, I got to speak first, and I thought we were going to give separate accolades to our colleagues as they locked out the door. So I can't have Bud walk out of here and think that he was slighted by me. So that being said, I'm not saying goodbye to Bud, because Bud is my state representative. He's our state representative, and his service to this community will continue. So I'm going to essentially say goodbye to this gentleman over here, as a member of... So I'm going to essentially say goodbye to this gentleman over here as a member of service in the community as, as an elected official. But Bud is still, he's our conduit to the state now. And we know how hard he fights and we don't expect that to change. So I just wanted to thank him for his service and encourage him to continue with the fight for his community, the city of Springfield. But now that fight will be in Boston. And I applaud him for the service to this community and his mentorship of me. Thank you, Bud Williams.
Counselor...
Counselor Andrew, specifically asked to speak and say a few words.
Is there a phone or a bomb?
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. President, for the courtesy of allowing me to speak in this informal session. I wanted to take a moment, I thought it was only right, on behalf of the next generation to really pay homage to the end of an era. If I'm not mistaken, I think the both of you have been elected about as long as I've been alive. And what we're witnessing here today, I really believe are two names that are gonna continue to live on as other young activists, advocates and politicians come up through the ranks. We'll talk with them about Counselor Rook and about Counselor Williams and our experiences with them. And I want to say personally that you have both been, at different times, extraordinarily worthy opponents and great allies in fights where we've had the honor of working together and agreeing. I think, you know, while we haven't agreed on everything, we've always been able to respectfully discuss the issues. And that's something that I've always respected about the both of you. I'm extremely humbled and I think we surprised a lot of people, Counselor Rook, with your support during the election. And I've also been very grateful for the words of wisdom and advice that I've been able to hear from Counselor Williams since the election and also during the campaign. And I think I can confidently say that you're both individuals who I look very forward to being able to reach out to for advice in the coming years. And I'm looking very forward to being able to work with now Representative Williams on behalf of our entire city. And I'm also hoping that we have the opportunity, again, Counselor Rook, to work together. So, you know, on behalf of the next generation, thank you both for your service to our city. And I think we also know that it's not over for either of you, including Counselor Rook. So Godspeed on your next endeavors and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, Tim Ryan.
Don't want to be, don't want to be go silent. God forbid. As a young man, I worked with both of these guys and recall with great, with great fondness the many nights we were in here and not always as happy, not always as many smiles as there are tonight. But there were two or few people who are as great and as vigorous champions for the city of Springfield as Counselor Rook and Counselor Williams. They've been there for now two decades plus. Timmy was always great on finances. He was always a great, great friend to the police department and always a great, great friend to business and people throughout the community. Counselor Williams, he was, he's been a great friend. I remember Buddy, we were up on Oberham Road, must have been the spring of 1994, together during a crime march with a group back then. And Buddy has always been there for the neighborhood. That might have been one of your first, but I've probably done hundreds upon since, working throughout the city, working throughout the neighborhoods. And just tireless both of you. It was a great honor to serve with you back then and it's a great honor to have the privilege of serving after you. And hopefully I can carry on in some small way the wisdom and the traditions that both of you so well about it. So thank you.
Thanks, Tim. I was gonna do these separately, but I guess it makes more sense to do them all together. And since everyone has had an opportunity to speak on both, I just wanted to thank Counselor Williams as well for his service to our city, so for his service to the city council. I know we've said goodbye to you before. And this is probably not the last time we'll be saying goodbye to you. I know you're not gonna go anywhere, but, you know, thank you for your service to the city of Springfield. And I've learned a lot from you as well, so thank you. Before I present the plaques, the two gentlemen would like to speak. Counselor Rook.
I just want to say that I hope my plaque is a little bigger than Bud Williams. Serving in this chamber and being elected by the citizens of Springfield over the many years, I just consider myself lucky. Didn't do anything out of the ordinary, didn't do anything out of the extraordinary and was very fortunate, very blessed. And some of the guys that helped me early, like Big Tom Shea from Hungry Hill, Sokol Kajakis, Jimmy Lyden Senior, who actually hired me first to work here, along with Congressman Neal, who was then a city counselor. The list goes on and on, the union representatives who helped, the neighbors, the businesses and family and friends. So thank you very much for letting me serve with you. It's been a great honor. It's been very humbling and just very pleased with the way things have gone. And I'd like to thank my family, my mother, who I know is watching here, told me to wear a suit. It's nice to say at 55 years old, she still gives me gas money when I drop her off at the Hungry Hill Center. My dad, who gave us a great name, and my brother, Tom, my sister Eileen, my sister Fran, my sister Kitty, and most of all to my son, Tom, who assumed the role of campaign manager, and my daughter Sarah. So thank you all very much. I really appreciate it and it's been a great honor. Thank you. (applause)
If I'd known you guys felt that way, I might have stayed. I mean, where do you start? You know, the greatest job is to serve. And I love the city. Born and raised in Springfield, it's a great city. We have a bunch of great people. And as I span a room, I've been with most of you in some campaigns, I've supported you, I've been with you. I started with Noel, when he first started running, Noel is the mother and father. The Allens and the Bogans, I'll go back with them. Tim Rook, my first run for council, Hungry Hills, his mother finally gave me a big coffee back in Hungry Hill, there were like 300 people. A Hungry Hill back in the 90s, unprecedented. Can I go to the Bogans? His father, very, very, very bad on a lot of issues. And that's family, the Walshes, Eric Katie, all the kids, done a great job with your family, my nephew Mark. Tony Ash, when he went his first campaign for school committee, I still think they still got that, what was that, pencil? Should have called you that. Should have packed it, figured I'd been using it. And obviously Henry and Ken Shea, going back with him when Kenny's under the school committee. And we had a lot of interactions in those days, the school committee and the city council, we got together, we had Christmas parties, we did a lot of socialization, we got a lot accomplished back in the day. And then look at young Finn and his uncle and his dad and his mom and his grandfather and his mom, you know, we could get it, took a picture with him, had a Irish magazine there, your grandfather, and you were in there and you kept that picture in your refrigerator for my, my long time. So just, just been, and Tim Ryan, family, Ryan's family, his dad and Jesse Letterman, the same way, young kid coming up Mason Square to talk with him. We haven't always agreed, but he's very respectful and he's gonna make a fine young counselor. And Orlando, I've watched his matriculation, his growth, his maturity, as he is starting to blossom and starting to feel his oats. And the outstanding job he did with your daughter, he was very, very engaged with that. That goes a long way with me. And then to Hearst, his dad, my best friend, go way back, fought many, many battles, still trying to fight battles, just trying to, trying to level the playing field. And thanking the family, my family, my wife and my kids and grandkids and all the folks who have helped me along this way. And I tell you, folks, Springfield's a great place. I think it's, it can only get better and bigger. And certainly, I learned politics way back on the north end. And the north end was always about the little guy. You could start with Tommy O'Connor, Eddie Boland, Sokol Kajakis, Richard Neal, Matty Ryan, Judge Keys, Paul Mason, Mo Jones, always about the little guys, the less fortunate. Because really, let me tell this last story. I remember when I first got elected, Billy Sullivan, who former mayor was mayor, and Billy Sullivan was still active. And I was up at the Hungry Hill Center and we had just had a financial order of $35,000 of finance. And most times people say, $35,000 financial order, don't pay much attention to it, you just don't say anything. Billy Sullivan, former mayor Billy Sullivan, starts says, "Counselman, let me say something to you. You might think $35,000 is not a lot of money of financial order, but the average person watching that television wants to know where every nickel goes that you spend of the taxpayers' money." Now, you can't stop every single order, but that gave me an understanding of people want to know that you're down here watching what's going on and you're paying attention. Because $35,000 might not seem like a lot in the scheme of thinking of this budget, but to the average citizen, that's a lot of money. So I picked my cue up from there. So sometimes I do ask a lot of questions because I know sometimes taxpayers want to ask the question, but they never get the opportunity. But you know what they're thinking. But it's a great body, you got a great future, continue to work very hard with the mayor. And I want to thank Anthony, our clerk for Duke Wilson, who's gonna be a fine young man doing a job. And my attorney, Davis. Well, you got a good team going here. So thank all of you. And like I said, I want to thank my family one more time. And those folks in the city have always had the greatest confidence in me. And I feel confident going to any neighborhood in Springfield, I'll go in and I'll walk through. My suggestion, get out and get involved, visit all the neighborhoods. It's a great city because the only way you're gonna learn about a different culture, if you go and you eat with them and you live with them. I learned that from an old politician. So thank you. I mean, you've honored me by just saying nice, kind, kind words about me. And I want to thank all of you. And we'll be working together. Thank you.
Present this plaque to City Councilor Timothy Jacob Brook. In appreciation of your dedicated service to the citizens of Springfield, Massachusetts, January 1st, 1996 through December 31st, 2017.
I forgot one person when I was speaking, that's my ex-wife, who, what I've been with for 26 years. I'd like to thank her for raising two great kids and putting up my nonsense.
Presented to City Councilor Bud Williams in appreciation of your dedicated service to the citizens of Springfield, Massachusetts, January 3rd, 1994 through December 31st, 2017.
Thank you.
Can you guys, can you guys look this way? So we can get a good picture?
We have a group picture. As a whole. You started young.
Can we get a picture of all of us?
Sorry, can we do a group picture? You have your group. I was 12.
Let's get all of us.
Want to do a back shot? But one other way. We have to... I wasn't ready. We should take the picture. Anthony.
You should hold up the, you should hold up the lap.
You can't put the fire, it's gonna be...
I should get out everybody's Springfield picture.
Let's see if I can ask him to excuse me. One, two. Counselor Ryan and I want in on the next one.
Oh, come on in now. Picture, Timmy, Jesse. Come on, jump in.
Yeah, come on in.
Come on in.
We wanted you guys to have one more picture.
No, please.
Thank you.
Sad to see you go. Thanks, man.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah, sad to see you go. Have a nice night in the council chambers.
We will now move on to the informal caucus. I will ask Counselor-elect Jesse Letterman and Counselor-elect Senator Ryan to join us.
Mr. Clerk.
The clerk will now accept nominations for, for president of the city council for the 2018 legislative year.
I would like to nominate, Mr. Clerk, I would like to nominate Counselor from Ward 8 for the second time, a great father, a great friend, Orlando Ramos, as president of the city council for second.
Any other nominations for president? At this time, we will take our informal vote for the president. You will cast your vote by saying the name of the individual you want to hold the position. Counselor Edwards.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Allen.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Letterman.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Gomez.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Ryan.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Ash.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Twiggs, absent. Counselor Shea.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Finn.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Hearst.
Orlando Ramos.
Counselor Marcus Williams is absent. Counselor Ramos.
Counselor Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Edgerton.
Any other nominations for the position of vice president? Now we're cast our votes. Please state the name of the candidate you wish to hold the position for the 2018 legislative year. Counselor Edwards.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Allen.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Letterman.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Gomez.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Ryan.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Ash.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Twiggs, absent. Counselor Shea.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Finn.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Hearst.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Marcus Williams is absent. Counselor Ramos.
Kerry Walsh.
Counselor Kerry Walsh is elected vice president for 2018 legislative year.
That concludes our last meeting of 2017. I will see you all at Samuels this evening and I will see you all on January 1st for this morning. Thank you.